Good evening, everyone. We are ready to start promptly at seven o'clock. We are going to start our meeting with our, uh, let's see, liquor control commissioners meeting.
Okay.
Um, so the first order of business with liquor control is to call a meeting to order and adopt an agenda. Do I have a, a motion from a board?
I make the motion that we, um, adopt the agenda as written.
Motion in a second. Anybody have anything to add to the liquor control? None heard. Uh, all in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No one? An approval of the minutes of the September ninth liquor control meeting? Motion in a second. Any additions or changes? None heard. All in favor of approving the minutes from September ninth, please say aye.
Aye.
Items three, four, and five.
I second that.
Hey, version three, four, and five. In a second. Uh, any discussion on anything on items three, four, or five?
No, thank you.
Unexpected. Um, all in favor of approval of those renewals? Please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No one? Public comment on liquor control?
I got something.
Go for it.
What's the town's liability? Do we have any at these events?
Town has liability through liability insurance through the legal cities and towns. And it allows alcohol to be served at events on town property. The select board has policies which it can follow to issue permits for alcohol to be served on town policies, on town properties.
So if somebody has an event with alcohol, they're liable?
They'll have liquor liability themselves, the, the event sponsor. And we will as the landowner.
Okay.
Probably not. We would have the same coverage that we would have on any day of the week if no land, right? If somebody falls down or...
We, we have one very large insurance policy, and I talked with the town finance staff about it today. Um, there's no scheduled property or scheduled, meaning specified events that are, are not allowed. Once a year, they go through an audit with the insurer and the insurer, um, and the town talk about what kinds of uses of all on properties and all the town equipment we expected in the year to come based on what has happened in...
Well, let me just...
It's like a blanket.
Brian said the same thing, not just if we're having an event, but if there's, uh, anything at Esterbrook Field, we have the same kind of coverage. It covers us.
Right. Right. Yep. So the town's outside consumption, uh, ordinance about alcohol is that the town allows outside, the town allows alcohol to be consumed outdoors only at events, not someone individually sitting on a park bench and consuming alcohol, but at a sponsored event, which will have the Department of Liquor Control kind of rules about fencing and on and so forth.
Any follow up questions to that, Brian?
There's a question from the...
Question, Jen. Oh, we got you. People are coming to the podium on their own now.
Um, rec department event where you don't require a liquor license, but do that people bring their own booze into the building?
That's, that's the same as of Vermont State Park allowing someone to bring their own alcohol onto the Vermont State Park's land. So this is the way that it works in Vermont. There's no liability assumed by the landowner if the landowner is not involved in either the catering of the alcoholic beverages or permitting the sale of alcoholic beverages.
If somebody could come here for the cornhole or whatever event, you don't have a bartender, a licensed bartender there? They just bring their own booze in and nobody monitors how much they drink and then they go and drive? What liabilities does that put on the town?
I would not want to comment on that hypothetical situation if there's a concern that there's alcohol being consumed when there should not be alcohol consumed, because in that situation, if there is a town sponsored event on town owned property, the town does not permit alcohol to be consumed.
Bill, do you want to speak to that? Because your events have had alcohol here.
People come into our event, see why?
O B event?
So the...
Back, when the town created a new park policy, I'm gonna say it was when they allowed case by case. Y O. One point was like um, um, yeah, just frisbee golf, frisbee golf. Um, but since, you know, we haven't had an indoor cornhole league in over a year and a half, and the four times that the, uh, the folks met last year for the disc golf, um, they were observed, uh, by a rec employee just generally to make sure people weren't being obnoxious about it.
Because it's confusing when you require everyone else in the town to get a permit to have alcohol at their event. And yet the town just says, oh, it's a rect depend.
It's, it's not a permit to have alcohol. It's a permit to sell alcohol. And, and that's like a pretty important distinction in the insurance kind of discussion.
To sell alcohol.
Right.
You have to have a licensed bartender and the permit from you guys.
Right.
So it's just confusing when you give preference to any rec department event that they'll allow the B Y O B. It doesn't make sense.
If the, if the select board wants to, you know, talk about policy in that regard, that would clearly be within the select board's, you know, general oversight purview to decide what is and what is not equitable use of alcohol on town properties or in town buildings.
Thanks.
Any other public comment?
Right. Sandy Mayo. For the select board and all. So that means that if people have, this whole thing Saturday, I want to talk directly to, that the Red Clover had, and they had that permission, you gave them the permission to, to what exactly? Sell alcohol now people to walk across the street with it over to Green Park?
The select board gives permission to Red Clover to sell alcohol in Green Park through a special event permit.
To transfer it from one side of the street to the other?
No, they typically have a gate.
The owners not...
See the gate, I'm just asking.
You're required to go into their space to purchase alcohol there.
So if they don't, if they purchase alcohol in the Red Clover itself and then walk it across the street, that would not be legal. They would be, that would not be legal.
I, I don't know about the legality of that. It sounds questionable to me.
The point is, is that there's a fence at Green Park that keeps people inside that are purchasing alcohol.
Right. Yeah, my understanding was, um, the times that I've gone to those events is you're not allowed to leave that area and you have to buy the alcohol inside that area. So I would not expect anybody to be walking across the street with alcohol.
Best laid plans. It can happen.
I, I, um, that's possible. My understanding is that that's not supposed to happen.
Right. That, that would be my understanding. The point is it can happen. If I'm looking out the window and I see somebody walking across the street with something in their hand and because Green Park had such a huge party on Saturday, I make the assumption it's probably alcohol and they're over, you know, they're not 12 years old. But I'm just saying, just for conversation's sake, that it could have been alcohol. At the same time, I, and I, I wrote to Seth back and forth over the weekend. I asked where the police were because people in town did not see the police and the town was so congested, cars were out of standstill. So where, were the police in their cars? And has anybody seen any police officers walking down the streets of Brandon? Just to walk down the streets and patrol the streets? Have we seen that? Has anybody seen that more than once?
Uh, we've had ongoing conversations with the police chief encouraging him to do just that, uh, with his officers. There were two officers on duty, um, Saturday throughout the day. There was another, well, there were events at the town hall that day. There was an event at Sister Wicked that day. Um, there was an event at Barn Opera that day. I don't know exactly where the police made their presence.
I guess I would like to know that you do know where the police make their presence, so I can be safe to know where I'm going to be. At Barn Opera, there were no police at Barn Opera. I know that. I was there. Where is, were they down at Es, Esterbrook? Were they there? Uh, were they at Gina's? I've never seen the police at Gina's and I go there. So I'm just bringing up a point that, and, and you try to encourage them. Don't we hire police that actually do that? That know that part of their job is to, you know, walk down the street maybe, uh, a couple of times a day, maybe three times a week? Do we, do we have that in their contract?
It's certainly not in their contract and it would not be something that would be a negotiated point in collective bargaining. It, it because that is not the subject of collective bargaining. The subject of collective bargaining is, is working conditions and compensation and things of that nature. The town has made a, a clear and ongoing, um, effort to have the police present in the community and do exactly those types of things that you have mentioned.
Once again, I don't think, I, I don't think anyone this, anybody in this room could say they've seen a police officer walk down the street, the main street, uh, more than once. I really think all of us could agree with that. And the amount of congestion just by people with streetwalkers starts giving rise to that safety as well as people crossing the street at will in a congested area. You know, there are certain things that are coming up that are becoming unsafe. And then getting back to the liabilities, do we have, uh, the people that do something in Esterbrook, the people that do something at the town hall, the people do something at Green Heart Park, at the Central Park, do they sign some contract saying that they are not going to hold the town liable for anything that might occur while they're, and do they rent those places?
There's so that...
That's a good question too. I'm sorry.
I don't know if you want to talk in more detail, but there's, there's different ways to use the public parks. Sometimes they're used in such a way that the town requires a certificate of insurance that ensures the town as a certificate holder. Sometimes these are rentals where money is exchanged, sometimes not. So it would depend on the act, on the specific event. There are events that use the park without paying the town other than for, uh, an itinerant vendor's permit. And in those cases, we still do require an insurance certificate.
So you do have some type of paperwork that can go out individually and it's just not a blanket thing?
Individually to, individually.
Right. Right. I have another question too, and now that we're going to go down to Connet Square and the turn in. There's been a no parking sign here forever. When a car still parks there and people call the police and no one has those cars moving, it still parks there. I have the option of cross the parking lot, which are that wants to go into the bookstore and turn it around everywhere and would stick that to our right on the seventy.
Either the back or front end.
And I don't want to do that, but the cars that are coming in there now that are turning around and even parking in my parking, you know, at six AM in the morning, they'll turn around and pick somebody up at, at the place. Anything. There's, there's a no parking sign there.
I, I appreciate knowing about it. It was not something I knew about and I will certainly ask the police to enforce the no parking.
Appreciate it.
Certainly. Certainly.
I think that, I think that that pretty much covers it. Again, we didn't even have to bring out the daily.
Yes.
Um, if you read the report, the police department does put in there all the things that they and many times in there it says they did a patrol and it says where they did the foot patrol. So they are. You look at...
Yeah, I would like to say as a select board that it is not the select board's position or job to tell the police where to be or how to be or whatever. Then we hire a police chief and a town manager and we certainly, um, let them do their day to day operation. We're not involved in scheduling or telling them what to do other than talking with our town manager about it.
I, I would second that and I will go on to say that at any given moment, unless there's a reason for a specific plan, um, at a time when the town manager is on duty, I, I don't see any reason why he'd be responsible for knowing where those police officers are. I'd, Mr. Hopkins is wonderful. He's not a police officer. So for him to take charge of that level of detail wouldn't necessarily be appropriate.
Excuse me. Because one, this town is, is growing and, and there's a lot that's continuing to go on here. And I think that everybody that is in public office here needs to take a responsibility for the people that live here. You just can't pass it off and say, well, the town manager's job and it's the police chief's job. Can't get the police chief. I think it's time we really had some more oversight into how we're taking care of the citizens in Brandon, not the tourists. Thank you.
Hey, any other public comment? None heard. Um, what, what do we have?
Seth.
We gotta wait, uh, we gotta wait, we're not gonna start right now.
I, I would, um, I would like to encourage folks, um, to consider. I'll wait. I would like to encourage, uh, Brandon residents to consider, um, what level of response they require when they communicate with either the town manager, the deputy town manager, a select board member, um, the police chief. Um, I did have, uh, an exchange over the weekend with you, which I was glad to do. Um, but it's, it felt to me like the concern would better have been directed directly to the police department to make the response. And I know that you're, you're, you're not agreeing with me about this. And I, I think that the reason that I say that respectfully is that if there's an event going on that you have concerns about and you want an immediate response, an office worker on a weekend who's not necessarily checking his email on the regular. I mean, you didn't call, you didn't text, like you emailed, and I feel like email is a pretty low level of response time required. And I was in Brandon at my home much of the day on Saturday. I was out of Brandon part of the day on Saturday going to a funeral. And I would hate to think that you would be reaching out on something that was of a time sensitive nature and not get a response at all when you could have had a response if you had called the non-emergency number at the police department. And if that did not get somebody immediately, but went to, you know, uh, uh, we'll call back kind of thing. Um, to, to, if it was a real emergency to, to call nine one one and, and try and get them dispatched.
For the select board. Thank you for saying that. And actually, when I did email you, I did not expect a response. I had just looked out my window. Company was in the gallery. I looked out my window. That's the first time I saw it. And I started noticing it and I sent you that email thinking that you would read it. And you responded to me. I was, I was quite impressed, first of all, and I was thanking you for responding to me. And so I took it upon myself to say, well, I'll respond to him too. But I, you know, once again, I saw something and no, I've, I've heard too many stories about the police not showing up. I've heard too many stories about nothing being done. So I, no, I don't. I think if we had another permit and we just didn't rely on, well, the town manager and the police chief will take care of it, we had the police themselves and we could meet with the police and have more contact with them as citizens in the community and the police officers as we are working together, then it would be different. But I never see them. I have to go over there and when I do, it's, it's like a jail. I mean, why, I don't see anybody behind that window. So I'm just, I just...
I would offer that I'm certain that the police chief would be super happy to start having a series of commu- community meetings that would be open or to meet individually or with small groups that had concerns. He's, he's a police chief that wishes to be, um, very engaged with the community and respectful of the community's desires and needs in the area of policing. I'm, I'm certain that if, if we asked him, there would be, yes, I can meet you here or there or this time or that time.
I, I really support that and I really wish you would act, you would act as an advocate for a, the police chief to either set up some meetings for all people. I don't need to meet one on one. I'd rather meet in a group where we can all be informed and we can all exchange information and have a better understanding what's going on. I would appreciate that.
I, I think that that's, um, a very good idea that we should advance and, and look to have happen in October, I would think is reasonable.
Just let me know on, okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to let people know that, uh, one of the Zoom participants said that they do it. Please remind folks that when they turn their heads away from the mic, they are not being picked up by Zoom, including the select board members.
Thank you. Anything else for, uh, liquor control or do we have a motion to adjourn liquor control?
Motion to adjourn liquor control, second.
Second. All in favor of returning the longest liquor control meeting I've been to, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? No one? Liquor is done. Now we move to cannabis. Uh, do I have some, a, uh, yeah, someone to adopt the agenda for cannabis?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you.
One second.
Motion in a second to adopt the agenda for cannabis. Any additions or changes? None heard. All in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No one? Uh, approve the minutes of the August 12th cannabis control meeting?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the August 12th meeting as written.
We have a second.
Second.
Second. Motion in a second. Any additions or changes to the cannabis minutes? None heard. All in favor of approving of the minutes of August 12th, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No one? Item three.
I make a motion that we accept the application for tier two cannabis in the agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second for tier two for alcohol cannabis. All in favor? Any discussion? Any discussion? None. All in favor of approval? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No one? Public comment on cannabis? None heard.
Motion to adjourn.
Brian's motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Motion in a second. All in favor of returning cannabis control? Please say aye.
Aye.
And now we are on to our normal select board meeting for September 23rd. Uh, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I make a motion that we adopt the agenda.
Uh,
Second.
Second. Motion in a second to change. Mr. Hopkins.
Mr. Chair, if you and the board would consider, um, adding a second executive session as might be Title one, A, A, one labor relations agreements with employees.
Any other changes to the agenda?
Mr. Bailey? I'd ask that, uh, if the select board would consider, uh, within the warrant, there's, uh, there's a warranted item. Uh, it's on page four of six. Uh, it's a premier coach for $10,026. Um, that's technically over our spending limit. I would request that you either pull it out of the warrant and have it as a separate agenda item or approve it with the warrant. Just want to make sure you're aware of it.
Which page is it on on the warrant?
Page, page four of the, of the warrant, um, numbers threes. They're, they're in alphabetical order. So it's between pocket pass control and remember Kevin?
$10,026 premier coach?
Yes.
You would like that to be an agenda item?
I just wanted to make sure you are aware. I, I mean, if you wanted to approve it with the warrant, that's fine. There are other items on this warrant that are above $10,000. I just want to make sure you guys are aware of it.
Want an agenda item or separate, I'm all for it.
I'm comfortable with it in the warrant.
Just highlight it. Okay. We'll, we'll keep it in the warrant and identify it.
Thank you though.
Okay. Um, so agenda has been adopted. All in, all in favor of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? No one? Um, item two, select board members remarks. I always get to start this off, so I would just start with my normal. That we're all neighbors and let's be respectful. Um, file foliage is, uh, dropping on us now and starting to see it, I think, a little bit of additional tourist, uh, traffic in and around town. Um, I guess I'd say remember that the tourists we meet and talk to today could be our neighbor tomorrow. Um, the way things go in town. So let's just do well. Any other select board remarks? Okay, moving on. Item three, reoccurring matters. Uh, first of which is the select board minutes from September ninth?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the September ninth select board meeting as written.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any additions or changes? None heard. All in favor of approval of the minutes, please say aye.
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 A, um, budget workshop minutes?
I make the motion that we approve the budget workshop minutes as written from the September 16th meeting.
We have a second. Sure. Okay, motion in a second. Any additions or corrections on the budget workshop? None heard. All in favor of approval of the minutes on the budget workshop, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? No one? Thank you. Um, the warrant. Now the warrant. September 25th warrant of which, um, there's one bill, bill just mentioned on the plus two.
I make a motion to approve the warrant for one million five hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars. It's pretty pricey.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. Any questions on any items on the warrant? None heard. Approval of the warrant. Please, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No one? Is the bill? Town managers report.
Chair and members of the board. I don't have anything particularly to highlight from it, but I report if I could.
They advise that they have a special public letter available tomorrow regarding their recommendations for reinstating, um, the tax sale process in compliance with revisions to the law um, that we had been waiting for. So I think I informed you that it was on pause pending them kind of coming up with a list, a checklist to make sure that everything we do is in compliance with the law as revised. The law was revised, um, to provide additional protections for taxpayers whose houses or whose properties were to be brought into tax sale. And it, the main thing as if, as impacts the town's process is the requirement of a notice that they, um, be informed that there is an abatement process available to them if they wish to pursue that before the town notices them for tax sale. Uh, the second thing I wanted to update the board on is that Vermont Roadways is in Brandon and they have begun, um, the Pearl Street sidewalk reconstruction today. Uh, they were still at it, um, shortly after six o'clock this evening when I checked in there.
Can you repeat that? Who was it? What was?
The pavers.
Oh, great.
Vermont, Vermont Roadways is the company. They were the winning bidder. Yep.
They would do the same ones during the Carver Street and...
Yes. They're doing all the sidewalks and they're doing the, uh, floor of the hoop building at the highway.
Do we have any update as to when the pavers would be doing any of our roads?
We actually don't. No. Um, I know that, uh, the select board will have noticed that the, uh, patch on Grove Street was done, uh, from the water leak. Um, and that was done by the fire district, um, I believe in conjunction with Vermont Roadworks being in town.
Um, somebody had brought up the idea, now I, don't ask me who, cause I won't remember. Um, maybe it was you, Rob. It was a good idea, um, of asking Vermont Roadworks what it might cost for them to do the same do the same thing for the tennis court at Esterbrook as they are doing for the hoop house.
I have not, I'd been waiting to, so the bidder who are the company that gave us a bid on doing the work last fall was updating their bid to downgrade their milling.
Yeah.
So, but definitely that they're in town, we can certainly ask them to take a look at it while they're here and give us a number including milling, so we're comparing apples to apples.
Right. I just wasn't sure because I know that we kind of were thinking, whoa, like 35 or $40,000 compared to 7,000 for something that I mean, to a layperson seemed comparable. But maybe there's a step that I'm not aware of.
Other questions for the town manager from the board? Questions for the town manager from the public? None heard. Moving on. Community development report, Mr. Moore.
Thank you. This is my report for today, September 23rd, 2024. The powwow was held at Esteban Park, started on the 19th, ended Sunday. The powwow organizers plan on donating their proceeds to the town of Brandon Recreation Department to set up a scholarship for fun for youth that have parents or guardians that are experiencing financial troubles due to illness. Vermont Buildings and Grounds recreational facilities grant has been submitted to support the purchase of the land on the South End of Seminary Hill Lot. December will be when the state announces the list of projects that have been awarded. The first Brandon Rec Adult Musical was a rousing success. Many thanks to Jeff Hall, the director, Kenny Sefon, the musical director, and the many, not man volunteers, but the many volunteers that volunteered to make Lucky Stiff a wonderful community collaboration. Next up will be winter youth, winter youth play and other smaller productions. Harvest Fest is coming, October 6th from one to four, there'll be a leaf stick person, wagon billing that like the chamber used to do that they passed off to the rec, now we build the stick people. They are not clothed, you pick out your own clothes. Thanks to Nifty Thrifty, wagon rides and many, many vendors for this annual fall rite of passage currently is this is at Esteban Park. Bootified Brandon House decorating competition registration is open. The sold out three buses, the Salem will be heading down on October the 3rd. There's still only about 20 tickets left for the New York City bus trip, two buses that are going out on December 14th. The annual Celtics bus trip has been scheduled for December 19th, when the defending 2024 NBA champs take on the Chicago Bulls. The first 14, this is actually 15 kids now, will be, will have a chance to stand in front of the players during the National Anthem. Tickets will go fast. That is my report.
Questions for Mr. Moore from the select board? I have one, just knowing that the all the funds have been secured and the, and the water fountains are in. Is there a time that they might be going into the park, seminary park? For people and dogs before the fall or not?
The idea is to get it in before the fall. Right now they're doing some line painting, other things, but it's on their schedule. They're working with our wastewater department, water, our slash water engineer and coordinating with fire department. For the tap in when the time comes.
Other questions for public questions for Mr. Moore? None heard. Yep, Neil.
I just, I don't know how good the audio is, because mine's been jumping in and out, but I'd like to comment on the powwow. I thought it was an excellent addition to the repertoire of activities in town. It seemed well attended, it seemed well done. And I would, if I was the voting kind of person, I would vote to have another, to repeat this annually.
Thank you, Neil, and I swear I didn't pay Neil to do this, but the power organizers were overwhelmed with the community support and want to plan on doing another powwow next year at the same weekend. September 19th, 20th, 21st. Their plan is actually to move it so it opens up on a Friday to provide the opportunity for local schoolchildren to have a field trip to the, to the opening events to open at noon.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Moore? None heard, moving on. Bill Moore again, I believe, bid for femur bio demolition?
So we received, we received bids from one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different companies that ranged from a high bid of $228,200 to a low bid of $64,050, which is quite a range. The apparent low bidder is Jack Bone Excavating. They've done work before for the town. They came highly recommended. And the state has asked if you would be interested in provisionally awarding the bid, pending some paperwork on their end to secure the rest of the funding.
I just want to clarify once again, so in this, we, the town is the pass through for the federal government, so there's not actually any cost to the town, it's just
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to pick the lowest bidder. Who did you say the lowest bidder was?
Jack Bowen Excavating.
Not any additional discussion, none heard. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Consider that. Consider purchase order for salt.
There, $87,000.
Dollars and 25 cents a ton. The budget was forecast at $90,000 for this item, so balance. Sidge last at it.
Yeah, thank you. I make a motion that we accept this purchase order for $87,000.
Yeah, motion in a second. Any other discussion on the boards? None heard, it's nice that it's under, under our budget. All in favor of the purchase order, please say aye.
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 Oppose, no one. We are up to public comment and participation. First we'll go with the board. Anything that the board would like to say that's not on our agenda?
I just should have said at the last, when I was talking about Newton Road, I just forgot and realized now that in the interest of transparency, that was my dad's business, but also not costing the town anything, it's the pass through, so just in case that, that that's
And at this point, to clarify, it's, it's not family
No, 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 no.
Owned by the town of Brandon.
Done, done deal, but just, it just occurred to me that in case that's something anybody was wondering about, that it's not a it's the federal government going through the, going through Brandon.
I have two things I'd like to just mention quickly and one is that we do have our second budget workshop coming this Monday, September, a week from today. September 30th at 7:00 PM, we'd be discussing highway and town management in that meeting. I thought the first meeting was a good discussion and more to come. And the second thing I have, because it wasn't mentioned, is this weekend we have the airstream group coming in and would you like to adjust that at all or just me or? We got the airstream group coming and they're
They're coming, they're going to be on the Brandon Inland, not on Park Street. We're excited to have them.
Starting to arrive on Friday.
I wish Bernie were here to give you all of his
Saturday is a free concert that they're paying for down there where we had the summer concert series.
Correct.
For people to attend, so just, you can have it on your calendar of events to know about. Sounds like a good thing. Any other public comment from any of the board?
Yeah, on the airstream. We have, we have no liability in that, right? The town?
Correct. It's held on the Brandon Inns Lawn. It's a chamber directed event.
The chamber, it's really a chamber function. Right. I see a hand, please come up.
Question about the airstream. Because you know, if the town, if Brandon is made arrangements for dumping the sewage.
Have they made an arrangement for dumping?
Dumping the sewage from the air streams.
I would assume not, but wait, 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 go ahead.
Chair, so the airstreamers are boondocking, meaning that they're not connecting to a water supply or a sewer connection with, with what is generated.
I just, I can kind of attest to that as a camper and with a motorhome and whatever, I can easily go a week without having to worry about any dumping facility being needed, so airstreams, people would, I'm sure have their arrangements for dumping their waste back at their homes.
Well, I just have questions because it's right by the finish of the river.
Yep.
And, and I am, I am the other side of that river. So I'm going here to see
Good, good question. Other public comments from the crowd, large crowd, please come up if you would.
Mr. Chair, while he makes his way up, there's one comment from Cecil, Renshie Smith, Renish Smith. Airstreams don't require sewer hookups. Comment.
No, he says you can't helicopter set wherever or but we, we really need to hear something about tree a little better. It seems after they're oddly believable. Someone's running a hill. It's getting down there. But I'm thinking at 75 plus miles an hour.
Down on Union Street?
I brought this up and
Have you contacted the police department? Have you called the police department about it?
Yeah, I know. All right, we'll send someone down there when under the pole and
I wholeheartedly agree. I took a walk down there with my friend and our thought was, wow, what a beautiful day and we are never walking on this way again. We had a dog, it was, it was
Right.
It was not a
And you're not the only one that's walked. You were probably on the side with the sidewalk, try walking beyond the sewer
I walked way out.
Right, where there's no, where there's no shoulder to speak of, no sidewalk.
Yes.
Yeah, and you're, it's not everybody, there's a handful of cars. It's a daily thing.
Thing is true of Carver Street. I mean, Carver Street's a slow in-town street and it, they get up to 70 miles an hour on that road. And I said, when I say, it's just a few.
Right, exactly. It's a handful of the same people.
And so I share your concern and I think the only thing we can really do is ask the police to keep attending to it. I know on Carver Street, they put up their wagon and that's helped to knock down some of what I perceive because I live right there and hear them revving up in front of my house. Does the town manager have other suggestions?
So I did this morning. This is the point that I'm saying, I did have female conversation with and I advised her that I had directed so this is very happy to and I also advised that I can time
I, I think the other suggestion I would make, because I try to do this myself, is that if you see a car going by and you know it's going 70, try to have some sense of what kind of car it is.
When you
Police identify who they are. Because racing through.
Right.
You know, these are people within our community. And so I'm not suggesting any vigilantism. I want to be very clear.
It's coming.
No, but
We don't want to walk like the streets anyway, you know, we need to allow the police to stop. But I think it is helpful for us to gather information, tell them to stop.
Well, an example might be way back when, when Nexus was up top of Mount Pleasant. I'm sure the police became well aware that, you know, whatever it was, what time they went out. They knew full well that that was the pattern and that was going to be a good place to sit. So I wonder if that same pattern.
May, may I just, so I my own story of this kind of an incident of gosh, 12 years ago, I was headed out on Champlain Street with my family, we're headed to go to actually, some friends go to a concertway over in New York and, and a young person, young man passes very dangerously on the flats right there by Loz Ag and went by and I made a report to the police and filled out an affidavit and he received a ticket, had to go to court and it was a young person. I like to think that it made a difference because I was able to again, fill out an affidavit knowing exactly who he was and he had to report to court. You can do that as well. That is something that is within the police's ability to do.
Well, we got a big bee's nest on the streetlight. The streetlight does not work.
Oh.
Do you know where that is? You know, lives, but So it, it sounds like you need to call GNP.
No.
Additional public comments? None heard. That would be it. I would say we'll call for a five minute recess before going into executive session.
Well, I actually just want to make one more comment, one more public comment, letting people know that today's the 23rd, the 25th is when we stop, we're targeted to get all those maps drawn up. If you had ideas about the forest still Brandon Connector Trail, the map is up online, it's right on the page when you drop in, want to print it up. I did receive one map from somebody that had drawn on it to submit to the municipal project manager for the, for the project.
Okay, five minute recess before executive session and thank you for coming tonight and join the new room. Motion for executive session.
I make a motion that we enter executive session regarding the appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee per one VSA subparagraph 313, 3A3 to include the town management team, Seth and Bill Moore.
We have a second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. We are entering executive session. Coming out of executive session, our first meeting.
No action.
No action taken by the board.
Okay, so now I move that we enter a second executive session. And I first make the motion that I move to find the premature general public knowledge of the police union contract will clearly place the town at a substantial disadvantage, disadvantage by disclosing its negotiation strategy. By disclosing its negotiation strategy.
Okay. Say a second on that?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Now I make a second mo- uh, motion that we move to enter executive session to discuss the police union contract under the provisions of title one, section three thirteen, A one of the Vermont statutes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, no one? We are re-entering executive session. We are coming out of executive session at.
Nine fifty P M.
Nine fifty P M. Uh, with no action taken. Um. Need a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.